Okay, hi. This is your review video for Unit 8, so your last unit, which is ecology. So ecology is kind of broken down into kind of five different subsections in the core syllabus. So we have responses to the environment. Then we have energy and ecosystems, which is kind of a slightly odd pairing anyway, where they put all the metabolic rate stuff in with food webs. And then populations, then communities, and then kind of a disruptions piece, which actually is pretty light in terms of content. There's quite a few questions that are coded as that, but it's really just being able to kind of use what you know about the other sections and work out how something that disrupted that could have an impact. So I'm going to kind of work through those particularly because some of these we did a little bit more kind of class content on and others we did more of basically focused on case studies and didn't really talk about together. So I want to make sure we go through and address all of those now. So I want to start with this whole responses to the environment. So I want to kind of divide it into two categories to start with, and one's going to be much more substantial than the other. But when we look at a response to the environment, we can kind of divide that into animal behavior and then plant behavior or tropisms. So those are both kind of examples of responses. So we tend to refer to the word behavior in an animal context, whereas we tend to refer to the word tropism as kind of a plant response. When we talk about behavior, we want to be clear that a behavior is basically is a response. So it's a kind of purposeful response, but it can be towards an internal or an external stimulus. So a behavior can be something inside of us that's triggering a response in some way, or it can be something in the environment. So when we say a behavior, a behavior is a response to an internal or external cue. So it's some way of acting, so a kind of overall body action that's in response to either. So just to kind of give you an example of kind of each and then we're going to kind of look at what are we really focusing on. So an example that's a behavior that's a response to an internal cue is circadian rhythms. And we did do a couple of examples on those. We did look at that a little bit at one of our case studies. And they does list that kind of in your syllabus as something to know about. So your circadian rhythm is basically your sleep-wake cycle, and it's actually an internal thing. So it is, there is a role of the environment as well. So our body does respond to darkness by releasing melatonin, which is a hormone that kind of does trigger sleep. But once we've kind of been in a time zone with a kind of consistent day, night, dark-night cycle, we do develop an internal body clock that tells us when it's time to go to sleep, even aside from kind of external cues. And you know that if you've ever had jet lag? Because if you've had jet lag, even if it gets dark, if your internal body is telling you it's not kind of time for bedtime, you'll have a hard time falling asleep. So our sleep-wake cycle is actually kind of a combination of both, but it does have an internal kind of environment separate component to it whereby our body knows kind of when to wake and when to sleep and has that set schedule. So that's an example of one that actually has an internal cue but also relates to an external cue, which is that the sunlight plays a role in that. And then external cues, you can think of things like hibernation, migration. So think about kind of major environmental changes. Those can trigger a response. And so when we look at kind of what is this course looking at? If you see here, it's responses to the environment. So we're really going to focus more on these. So we're going to focus on what kind of external things cause animals to respond or behave in a certain way. So that's going to kind of be our emphasis. I actually want to go ahead and get the tropisms out of the way because that's a smaller component. And then we'll come back to looking at our animal stuff. So this is ecology. So it has a kind of a weird combination. They used to have a little bit more separated syllabus and they kind of tried to make fewer bigger units. So there's a little bit of plants kind of scattered throughout as opposed to having a plant unit like they used to. So we did talk briefly about tropisms. It was in your reading. And you did your kind of POGO activity that looked at the hormones. So you don't need to know a ton about it, but there's a few times that it comes up. The main one it tends to want you to know about is phototropism. So there is also thigmotropism, which is a response to touch. There's gravitropism or geotropism, which is a natural response towards gravity. So stems growing upwards against gravity, roots going down with gravity, hydrotropism, growth towards water. But the majority of the questions I've ever seen them ask about seem to be about phototropism. So the idea of phototropism is basically cell elongation, which leads to bending or growth towards light. So this is an example of a positive tropism. Positive just meaning not necessarily like, they're all positive. All behaviors tend to aid in survival. So they're all essentially positive for the organism, but positive is in towards. So towards the stimulus, which is the light. So plants can't move. So when we talk about animals like taxis, which is very similar to tropisms, is actually a physical movement. Plants is a growth towards. So the roots stay in the same place, but the growth is towards that. And it's all due to a hormone called auxin. So auxin is the hormone that actually is responsible for this. I'm just going to do like a really tiny little diagram of it just so you have some understanding of how auxin causes phototropism. So here's my sun. Here's my plant. And on the tips of the plant, there's what's called phototropins. So phototropins are receptors. And there's a couple of times I've seen auxin show up and then some interesting kind of FRQs where it's not really about understanding exactly this every detail. But if you have a bit of background knowledge on auxin, it makes it easier to kind of navigate the question. So if the light actually reaches the phototropin, so I'm just going to label these guys as phototropins, what it actually does is that light doing that actually inhibits auxin. So sunlight actually works to inhibit the production of auxin. So you're going to have less auxin on the sunny side. And then over here where there's no sun, so this is my shaded side, is going to have an increase in auxin. So it's a little bit counterintuitive where you would think, okay, well, the sun makes more auxin. It's actually the opposite. The sun stops the auxin. And why that's important is because it means over here on the shaded side, the cells elongate and get longer and then they actually kind of fold over the shorter cells. So by making the shaded cells longer, they kind of naturally are going to bend on top of the shorter ones because of the weight of the longer cells. So it causes a cell elongation on the long side or cell elongation on the shaded side. And that's what's going to cause the bend. So that's going to cause then that to bend towards the sun, which is helpful because that's going to provide more access to sunlight, which is going to increase the photosynthesis rate, which is going to cause increased survival. So that's kind of the one example I would want you to know in terms of plant responses is just to feel comfortable with phototropism as an example of that. With animals, there's a few more kind of that we need to talk about. So there's kind of two main categories that come up that I want to go through. So first of all, is a response or behavior towards a stimulus. So that's kind of similar to what we just talked about there. The second category, which is still a behavior and still relates to responding to the environment, but is communication. So communication's a little bit different. So when you were saying individual response to a stimulus is all about basically an individual moving towards or away or accessing, doing things to get something it needs. Communication is how do organisms let each other know what's going on? So how do they communicate with each other? So communication is a form of behavior. So we are going to talk about it as well. And there's a couple, well, one really specific example I want you to know. But let's start with kind of before we get into that, just an individual response to stimulus. So in this case, we're not looking at any sort of communication between organisms. We're just looking at how individual organisms respond to something in their environment. Okay, so within that, there's two kind of big categories, and they're really important, particularly in understanding how this pieces together with evolution. And that is that sometimes the behavior is innate. So an innate behavior is something that is not learned, meaning you don't have to have any experience. You're essentially born knowing how to do it. So without any experience, just boom, know how to do it. So a good example kind of to try to make that point with humans is related to temperature. So shivering is an innate behavior. So when you were two, nobody sat you down and was like, "Go like this, go like this, you can do it." You just knew how to shiver. It's an internal thing that your body says, "When cold, I'm going to do this," increases the metabolism, increases the heat generated. So that's just something that's an innate kind of instinct behavior. An example of a learned behavior response to cold would be like wearing more layers or turning up the heater. So those are things that from your experience, perhaps when you were a baby, your parents did put more clothes on you. When you were a toddler and you're like, "I'm going to run around in shorts." They're like, "No, you're not, you're going to wear pants." So you had to kind of learn that idea that the accumulation of layers of clothing can protect you against the cold. That's a skill you had to learn. Kind of a dumb example, but just trying to make the point of, did you need experience to gather that skill? Or did you pop out knowing how to do it? So that's kind of the, how we distinguish that. So let's look at some examples of both types. So can be innate or learned. So all the learned stuff is really interesting to me because of my background in teaching psychology. So love hearing, you know, learning is all like, how do our experiences cause us to behave differently? As in a biology focus, we're really going to look more at the innate ones because that's again where we comes back into evolutionary perspective and to what degree can we evolve behaviors because they're in our genes, they're born knowing how to do them. So again, if it's innate, the key here is this time you're born knowing how to do it. So that's what makes it innate, and it's genetic. So it's believed that you have genes that tell your body how to do these behaviors. So you have a series of kind of instructions towards a behavior. So genes don't just have to be for a physical structure. They can be towards a behavior. And because they're genetic, generally, they actually help us in some way. So they generally increase our fitness and therefore they evolve through natural selection. So I'm not writing that in big full sentences, just kind of a trigger that when we're talking about innate behaviors, because they're genetic and because they generally help with survival, they can be kind of based on that. There's two main ones that you need to know about. I'll mention kind of all three that came up. But the three, the two main ones are the difference between kinesis and taxis. So kinesis is just random, directionless movement. So this is random movement, not in any direction. And even though it's not towards a stimulus, it still can be evolutionarily beneficial. It's a part of kind of exploring the environment. So movement can help kind of guide towards stimulus. It can help discover what's around. It also can help with metabolism. So movement can kind of increase metabolic rate and therefore increase kind of body warming. So it has kind of several purposes, but it's not directed towards anything. It's just movement for the sake of moving, and that's kinesis behavior. The opposite of that, which is very, very similar to a tropism, is called taxis. So a taxis behavior is a movement towards a favorable stimulus or away from an undesired. So if we're saying towards a favorable stimulus, that's towards a food source is a really good example. And then if we say away from an unfavorable, that could be away from light if light might increase the likelihood of being seen by a predator. That's a really common one. It can be a thermo one. So it can be towards a warmer environment, away from a cooler one. So it's movement towards something that's beneficial. And they can be positive or negative. So if it's towards, it's considered to be a positive taxis. And if it's away from, it's considered to be a negative taxis in terms of its direction, but they're both beneficial. So they're both in some way going to aid in survival. And we're going to talk more about that in just a second because that comes to the lab, the animal behavior lab. The other example that they gave, which is kind of similar to taxis, is what's called a fixed action pattern. And these are slightly more sophisticated, but still innate behaviors whereby a stimulus triggers a series of behaviors. So it can be a stimulus triggers a series of like nest building behaviors. So in that case, there's a kind of a set, this starts and then it continues. And what are interesting about fixed action behaviors is they tend to continue the sequence even if the stimulus is removed. So it's something that starts it, but then it kind of is one after another. So it's kind of like a domino effect behavior. So this is just basically a series of actions prompted by an initial stimulus. So a stimulus kind of sets something in motion, but then continues. And so there's a series, like a number of kind of more complex animal behaviors that are still innate that fall into that category of fixed action patterns whereby something starts it and then there's like an innate sense of then do this, then do this, then do this. So anyway, there was some cool reading about that on Khan Academy. So if you want to go back and read the examples of that, you can. I would say the most important thing is to understand taxis. And taxis is basically the animal behavior of a tropism. They're both a response towards or away from a stimulus in the environment. And the example of tropism, it's a growth towards or a growth away from. Whereas in the example of taxis is a movement towards or movement away from, but very similar in concept. So we'll come back to that in a second because I like to cover kind of anything that's related to the main labs that we did because they like asking questions on those labs. But first, let's look at some learned ones. And again, these are not going to be as crucial because this is kind of gearing more into that area of psychology. So we're just going to spend like two minutes covering it. The key if it's learned is that it's going to be based on experiences. So until you have certain experiences, you don't have the behavior. So the behavior comes from experience. And there's two really cool categories of it that again, I could go on and on about because my inner psychology teacher gets excited about that, but I won't because I don't think it's super, super important. But they're basically conditioning. So the first one is called classical conditioning. And this is the whole Pavlov and his dog concept whereby basically a new stimulus gets paired with something. So pairing of a new stimulus with a favored one. So the classic example is the whole ringing a bell before presenting the food. And so the food is a natural, instinctive kind of preferred thing. But the argument is if you ring a bell before you bring the food, over time, the dog actually salivates in response to the bell because it's become associated with the food. And then you can even go from that. So then you can actually like clap three times, then do a bell, then present food. And then they'll start responding to the clap three times. So as long as it's something that was already favorable, you can kind of add another one to that. So that's classical conditioning, which is basically taking something they already have a response to and adding something else in front of it so that they carry out the response to something else. Other example is operant conditioning. And operant conditioning is basically just rewards and punishments. So it's basically learning from consequences whereby we may not have any kind of strong feeling towards an object, but if it's always associated with a reward, it becomes favorable. If it starts to be associated with a punishment, it becomes unfavorable. Again, huge areas of research in the area of psychology. In the area of biology, it's just understanding. And if you have a pet, you know this. You've seen examples of your pets being able to be trained. So dog training just uses operant conditioning. Like, hey, if you do this, you get a treat. Now you're going to keep doing this. Classical conditioning is often used in kind of like toilet training and things like that. Like they know if they press this, then you'll let them out the house or things like that. So these are things that again, if you've spent time with animals, you'll see the animals do have the ability to learn behaviors. And of course, humans, we're huge learn-based behaviors. Most of our behaviors are learned from experience, but it does happen in other animals as well. The other thing that you can consider a learned behavior is like problem-solving behavior. So that can be as simple as basically solving a maze. So rats, if you put them in a maze, they'll actually learn the maze. So they'll learn kind of how to address it. There's examples of monkeys being able to stack crates in order to access a banana. So really interesting kind of that next level cognition behavior that you're really only going to see if you're looking in fairly higher, complex organisms. So definitely kind of primates, higher mammals, things like that. They show those kind of more true problem-solving behaviors. So those are kind of learned behaviors. And again, really the innate behaviors is where we're really emphasizing. So I do just want to kind of in this video go over the two labs that we did because anything that is one of the 12 AP labs is fair game for the test to ask you about. So it's kind of like if it's in the lab manual, you need to be able to answer any questions on it. So if you recall, our lab really related to taxis. So our lab was the animal behavior lab. And we used a choice chamber. And basically what we were doing was just testing to see whether it was a taxis response or not. So the independent variable that you would look at is basically two different stimuli. And the dependent variable was the number on each side. And so if it was a kinesis behavior whereby they were moving, but they weren't moving towards something, they were just moving, then you would expect some move to this side, some move to that side. So if it was kinesis, then you would expect to see an equal number on each side. And in experimental condition, that would actually represent my null hypothesis. Because I was actually saying, we're believing that it didn't make a difference. So the stimulus didn't have an impact. It was just random behavior. So anytime something's random, that's in conjunction with our null hypothesis. If it's taxis, on the other hand, then you're going to expect to see more on a favorable side. So whatever happens to be more favorable to them. And then if you're trying to determine which it is, you're going to use a chi square test. So is this enough more? You're going to determine if it's statistically significant using chi squared. And it's a really easy chi square because you're expected is just equal number. So if you had 18 bugs that you started with, your expected is nine and nine. Your observed is however many you got. So it's like the world's easiest chi square. So if you walk into your AP test in May and the chi square that they choose for you, because there's always going to be some chi square on there, is this as opposed to Hardy-Wineberg or genetic problem? You have lucked out because you don't have to do anything for the expected. It's just equal. So your expected is going to be just equal on each side. So if you're doing a chi square, whatever the equal number, that's what you would use as your expected. And then you just do, you know, observe minus expected, observe minus expected squared, observe minus expected squared, over expected, and then calculate it. We're going to review chi square leading up to your exam. So we will spend some more time on it, just making sure we're good on it. But on this test, it's a pretty easy one if it comes up. So you should be pretty good. So that's our animal behavior lab. So again, just need to be able to know how to interpret data on that. The last kind of thing I want to look at is, like I said, that subset of behavior, and that is communication. So it's related to animals, not plants. So I'm just going to kind of draw a line there. And we're going to put animal communication. So communication is a form of behavior, but a little bit more complicated because while these are like, do you go or towards or how do you get what you need? This is more like how do the communication happen between or within species? So this is really about exchange of information between individuals. And most of the time, we're looking at within a species. So the majority of communication is intraspecies communication whereby members of the same species are communicating. So there are exceptions to that. The most obvious one being things like pets. So cats purr as an indication that they like what you're doing and to try and encourage you to continue it. So there certainly are examples, particularly in domesticated animals. You see it has evolved more of that ability to communicate with another species. In the wild, most species are kind of communicating only with themselves. So most of the time, it's between individuals of the same species. And so what we're looking at is kind of just basically a signal. So it's basically use of a signal. So we have a tendency to sometimes think that communication has to be verbal. So when we think communication, we think language. Communication and language are not the same thing. Communication is just, I'm doing something that's providing you information. So I'm using a signal to give you information. That's all communication is. So it can be in the instance of humans, verbal language. But in other animals, they do communicate even though they don't use words to do so. So one of the big types of signals is pheromones. So pheromones are chemicals that send a message. So a pheromone can be an identifying chemical. Sometimes they leave pheromones to kind of like, here's where the food is. And then they'll track backwards and leave pheromones towards it so to guide other members of a species. They can do it to attract mates. They can do it to kind of establish territory. So a lot of times, pheromones are chemicals. And a lot of times, they're olfactory-based, which means the other organisms smell the chemical and that's how they receive the information. So that's one of the most interesting kind of ones used by a lot of different animals. Particularly insects use them a lot, but so do dogs. So there's kind of a wide range of organisms whereby they release a chemical that can be smelled by the others and that chemical is associated with a message. So that chemical says something that gives a message to another member of a species. The other big one is auditory signals. So if you think like mating sounds, mating sound, and even barking is an auditory signal. So any sort of sound production that's intended to give a message to another organism is an auditory signal. So again, doesn't have to be a word. It's just a sound that means something. There's also visual and tactile. Those are more rare. So probably the two most common in the animal kingdom are pheromone-based and auditory-based. So not many animals use sign language. But there are some signals that they use kind of bodily signaling for. And there are some instances where they will touch an organism to send a message. But the two kind of easiest ones because they don't require kind of coming into contact with each other is to release pheromones or produce a sound. And then the question is kind of why? So what purpose do these actually serve? So why do animals communicate with each other? And there's a range of different reasons of why they do that. They do it to attract mates. So that's kind of bird songs. They do it to kind of mark their territory. So to defend kind of that they're already claiming that territory. So pheromones can be used for that. They can do it to coordinate a group. So if they're trying to build an ant mound or bees working together, if they can communicate with other members where they're going, they can coordinate kind of group activity. They use it for caring for the young and sometimes cooperative caring. So letting others know. And then they also can do it for kind of providing information. And that can be about resources. And it also can be about warnings. And so that's the one specific one I want to kind of quickly address is this idea of a warning call. So you can use communication to let others know that there's a predator nearby. And pheromones can do that, which are a bit safer. But there's auditory signals that let you know that a predator is coming. And I saw that specific example. So there's kind of a specific communication whereby one member of a species identifies a threat and they release an auditory signal. And that auditory signal lets the others who are further away from the threat retreat and get safety. The problem is is that the one who releases the signal often makes themselves more vulnerable because the signal, while it allows communication to the others to get away, actually highlights kind of their vulnerability and a lot of times, they can actually be killed by the predator. So why would they do that? Well, because evolution, remember, is all about optimizing your great-grandchildren. So it's all about optimizing long-term kind of genetic retention. So if you were to die, but it saves three of your offspring and those offspring then go and have offspring, that's a better genetic outcome than your offspring, you and the offspring dying and, you know, losing kind of that ability to carry on your genes. So natural selection member favors kind of generational survival, not just individual survival. So that particular type of communication is called kin selection. And so in kin selection, an individual provides a warning call. But it does so at a personal cost. But saves related organisms. So by saving ones that share its genetic makeup, that's still kind of overall favorable in terms of natural selection. So organisms have evolved this tendency to have self sacrificial, sometimes called altruistic behavior. So it's self sacrificial behavior that's for the good of their kin. Now, it is like in humans, altruism hopefully doesn't only extend to your family members. In animal groups, it does seem to be very related to genetic relationship. So it tends to be that they only do that if it's a protection against kind of the loss of their own family. Because everything's driven by evolution. Again, these are innate behaviors, meaning that we're doing it to save kind of your genes. So that's kin selection, something very hard, it's pretty obvious, but it is something that is a specific behavior. So in the syllabus, they kind of want you to know all of this. But I tried to touch on a few that were kind of specifically mentioned, which is that they want you to know what a circadian rhythm is, which is that internal body clock that tells you when to sleep. They want you to know what a taxes behavior is, what a trope is, what a kin selection is, and how to use a choice chamber. So those are kind of bits and pieces. There may be other things that come up in communication. So again, multiple choice, free response questions, they give you a prompt. They'll tell you a bit of information. And then it really just becomes a matter of problem solving or being able to apply what they've told you. But these are kind of some background ones that come up more because they especially kind of mention those by name. Okay, so the next kind of content dot point is kind of all under this energy systems. And again, it kind of feels to me like when they made the ecology unit, they were just like, oh, let's put some plants in there, let's put some animal body systems in there, let's put some ecology, kind of classic ecology like food webs in there, and then just made a unit. So it's a little bit of a hodgepodge. They used to have more like 11 units, they just kind of threw a few in there. So this one's a little bit strange in that it covers both food webs and also metabolism and temperature regulation. So anyway, let's break that down. They are related in the sense that, you know, ultimately, the whole idea of a food web is exchange of energy. And the idea of the energy available at one trophic level. And what of that is actually available to the next trophic level? So understanding that idea of energy loss is important. So that's my best attempt at making sure that there is some connection between what I'm about to talk to you about. So let's kind of review quickly what we mean by the word metabolism. So that's going to come up here. So metabolism, we use this word back in our energetics unit. So metabolism is basically just changing energy from one form to another. So it's the process of converting molecules from one energy based form to another. And it can probably even be more broad than that, but in the context of what we're talking about, that'll work. So let's clarify that we're going to say metabolism is the transfer of energy from one form to another. And so what we're going to, again, it's anytime your body's basically taking, doing a chemical reaction. So it's taking one set of things and turning it into another. The way we're going to use it here is we're going to use it almost synonymously with cellular respiration. So in this context, when we talk about it, we're using it really to mean cellular respiration, which is taking glucose and converting it into usable energy ATP needed for cellular functioning. So when we talk about metabolic rate, in a lot of ways, what we're saying is the rate at which your body consumes food for energy. And honestly, that's kind of how we use it in layman's terms too. So if you've ever said like, oh, I have a high metabolism or good metabolism, you're basically saying, I take a whole lot of glucose to kind of keep my cells going. So if you have a high metabolism, you convert a lot of glucose into ATP, which means you burn a lot of food up, so you can eat a lot. So that's why literally people like having a high metabolism. Because it means you require more glucose in an average day than someone else because you're doing more of this. So that's where that kind of term comes from. So that's what we're saying when we talk about metabolism. We're really talking about any kind of processes in your body that exchange things. But we can also say, we're kind of using it to mean cellular respiration. And what you need to know, and this is what probably didn't come up necessarily as much when we did actual respiration in terms of glycolysis and Krebs, is it is an imperfect process. So when we are doing this, when we're taking glucose and we're trying to make energy, all of that energy doesn't get to go be used by our cells. So we make ATP, and it's not like 100% of that 38 ATP we made respiration is all going directly to what we need. Some of that ATP in this process just gets burned off as heat. So your body doesn't retain all of it. So it's an imperfect process whereby energy is lost at heat along the way. So when we undergo this metabolic process, some of what we're going to be burning, we're not actually getting to keep. So it's just burning off as heat, which is kind of another reason why some people have higher metabolism. If they burn off more as heat like that, then as a result, they have to eat more to get the ATP they need because a lot of it's actually being lost. However, that heat loss can actually be beneficial because that, sorry, that energy that's lost as heat is actually, can be trapped in the body and used to warm up the body. So that heat actually causes body temperature regulation. So heat loss, this heat loss actually provides a beneficial purpose in some animals. However, it's only really beneficial for animals that use internal mechanisms to maintain their body temperature. So we do that. So we actually, when we burn off heat, we actually use that to keep our body at a consistent temperature. Which means that like right now, I'm in my classroom and it's fairly cold and my body temperature is probably around 98.6. And when I get my car this afternoon to go home, and I get in my car and it's going to be hot, but my body temperature is going to stay about 98.6. So we're able to go into different environments and keep kind of a core body temperature, which is a type of homeostasis, although it's not the only one. So be sure to be aware that animals that are not endotherms, who don't maintain an internal constant temperature, still have other mechanisms of homeostasis. They might maintain water balance, they might maintain glucose levels. So it doesn't mean they have no homeostasis. But this is a very specialized homeostatic mechanism for endotherms. So it's a beneficial form of particular temperature regulation to endotherms. So again, it kind of felt like the course was like, hmm, somehow we've never taught about endotherm versus ectotherm. And we're really big fans of that concept, so here's where it's going to go. So let's quickly make sure we know the difference between endotherm and ectotherm. And this is probably something you learn like in middle school, so this is probably not earth shattering. But we need to then connect it to what that means about metabolic rate and energy. So kind of going beyond like, hey, a lizard on a rock versus a mammal. And actually what that means about their metabolism. So endotherms are actually going to make and use metabolic heat loss to keep an internal kind of consistent temperature, to maintain a consistent internal temperature. So you probably already knew that endotherms maintain an internal temperature. But making sure that we recognize where does that kind of consistent temperature come from? It's related to metabolism. So in terms of animals, of course, mammals, but also birds are endotherms. And we did the class activity and we looked at kind of the idea that there's also some mesotherms, so kind of an in between, which some reptiles and some birds fall into. So it's not super clear cut, but we're just going to kind of, you really just need to know the two kind of extremes for right now. And so because we use metabolic heat loss, our body actually wants to produce more ATP because that heat loss is beneficial to us. So we actually do a lot of metabolism, a lot of breaking down glucose to get ATP. Because we know that that byproduct being made is serving a purpose. So we kind of overdo the process because we're using that side effect. So as a result, we're going to have a higher metabolic rate because of the fact that we use that heat loss. So by doing kind of more cellular respiration, we generate more heat and that's how we stay warm. So higher metabolic rate in order to produce more heat. So it's kind of a side effect that's become a purpose. So we're actually kind of doing it in a lot of cases for that. And if you're in a really cold environment, I've heard of cryotherapy, but it's basically the idea of some people going for five minutes in these extremely cold environments. And it's thought to like jumpstart your metabolism because your metabolism's like, oh my gosh, it's cold, I need so much ATP. And so then your body actually increases your metabolism. So it's kind of a weird celebrity trend now that you can kind of burn more calories by exposing yourself to cold, really cold environments for short periods of time. But basically, our metabolism is increased by our need to stay cold, or need to stay warm when it's cold. Ectotherms, on the other hand, is body temperature is regulated only by their environment. So body temperature is not internally regulated. But instead changes with the environment. And so as a result, they have a lot of important behavioral adaptations become really important for them. Because things like getting out in the sun, burrowing, coming up with ways to avoid temperature extremes. So their behavioral responses, when we talk about like taxes, you're going to see ectotherms have a lot more thermo taxes behaviors. So they're going to be more sensitive to kind of seeking out correct environments temperature wise because they don't have the internal mechanism. So they're going to use a lot of behavioral adaptations to kind of ensure that they can maintain the right body temperature. So a lot of animals actually are ectotherms, so reptiles, amphibians, fish, and all invertebrates. So that's actually the normal, which is worth noting because it's easy for us to think that whatever we do is what animals do. But most animals actually are ectotherms who are a little bit more environmentally dependent. And then as a result, because they're not using their metabolic heat loss to warm their body, they don't need to do as much production of that because they're not trying to make use of that. So they use kind of more of their ATP goes to life processes. And the stuff that's lost as heat doesn't prove a benefit to them. So they don't ever kind of increase their metabolic rate to generate heat. So kind of per size, they have a lower metabolic rate. Now they still, metabolism is still super important because they're going to be using it to get ATP for kind of life processes. So it's still super important, but they don't tend to have as high of metabolic rates because they're not making use of that. Couple other things on this kind of specific energy thing. Generally speaking, obviously, if you're bigger, your metabolism is going to be bigger. So that makes sense. So generally, a really, really big muscly, six foot five man is going to burn more calories than me because you've got more tissue on him than he needs to provide energy for. So bigger organisms have more cells, more cells means needs more ATP. So body size does mean a higher metabolic rate. So an increase in body size means an increase in your metabolic rate. But here's the big thing. If you, instead of just looking at your over metabolic rate, if you look at your metabolism per gram, it's actually higher metabolism per gram in smaller organisms. So small organisms have lower overall metabolism. But if you break it down per gram, per pound, they actually are metabolizing more. And they don't like, Khan Academy, if you read the article, it says there's not like a clear reason for that. But the one that makes sense in the context of this is just surface area to volume ratio. So small organisms, more of their body is exposed to the environment. So they have more tendency to kind of lose heat and so they have to work harder to kind of keep it up. So they have to work harder to maintain that kind of internal regulation because they sweat more, they have more kind of loss to the environment by being more exposed to the environment. A really big elephant has a lot of body tissue that's very internal and less prone to kind of losing heat or being kind of fluctuated by the environment. And so as a result, they can kind of retain their heat a little bit better, they don't lose as much of it. So that's probably the most sensible explanation for it in terms of this, is it's all coming back to this whole idea of producing heat. And smaller organisms need to work harder to keep their heat because of the fact that they're a little bit more exposed to the environment. So body size means, increased body size is increased metabolic rate. But smaller organisms tend to have an increased rate per gram. So it just shows why it's important to kind of look at what you're measuring it by. And consider that because that can kind of be a fact, it's not just, well, yeah, obviously, an elephant is going to have a higher metabolic rate than a mouse. But if we really want to understand what's going on, you need to kind of go down and look at it per gram. And then the last little weird thing that they threw in with energy that they're like, oh, somewhere for it to belong, is the kind of energy in reproduction. So the idea is that it takes energy to reproduce. So reproduction is an energy requiring process. So organisms have to have enough energy to put into reproduction. And that's true for us as well. It's like if people are really underweight, they will generally, like women who are really underweight will stop having normal cycles because everybody's like, I don't think reproduction's on the cards right now. Like, right now, we need to use all our energy for surviving. So to reproduce, you have to have kind of a surplus and available energy. And it kind of takes energy for two things. So energy, first of all, to actually making the offspring. So that's the energy required in the actual production of eggs or sperm. The actual experience of fertilization requires energy. And then there's also energy required in caring for the offspring. And this is like very non-earth shattering news. So it takes energy to make a baby and it takes a whole lot more energy to care for a baby. So those are two things. So most organisms don't have the energy to kind of do both at a high level. So most organisms don't have the energy, just like if we wouldn't, to make like 100 offspring and care for them. So that's just, it's not going to be feasible. So if you think about kind of survival of the fittest, it's like, well, let's make all the offsprings. That's all the genetics that we can do. But energy wise, that's just not possible. So organisms kind of have two strategies for how to overcome the fact that they don't have the energy to make and care for an indefinite number of offspring. So the first option they have is to make lots of offspring and just not really care for them. So in that case, they're like, we're going to make a whole lot and then you're on your own. And that works for some organisms, particularly organisms that are small, don't have a lot of resource needs, short kind of development periods, and overall short lifespan. So the idea is that you just got to get them to the point where they can reproduce and that's just kind of how your species keeps going. So that's called R selection. And so R selection means all of your energy goes into the making of the offspring. So you have many offspring, but very little kind of caring for them. But low energy investment in each. And so if you think about a lot of insects like flies, flies are just like, make more flies, make more flies. And then the flies are on their own. They basically pop out already ready anyway. And so these tend to have short embryonic periods, like basically they're born ready to take care of themselves. And so you can use your energy on the actual making of offspring because you don't need energy to care for your offspring. If however, your offspring are a little bit meatier, if they're born without all kind of the skills for survival, then it doesn't work to have a whole lot of offspring because they're not going to be able to survive. So you're not making progress if you're just having them and then not having the energy to care for them. So the opposite of that, which is done by kind of larger animals, is K selection. And in K selection, you use some energy to make the offspring, but you save energy for the caring of them. So you have few offspring, and then you invest energy into caring for them. So obviously, humans are the ultimate example of that. Where we have very few offspring and high level of care in terms of years of care. And a lot of them go in between. So you know, dogs have litters with many offspring, but they do provide a period of kind of nursing and caring for it until the offspring is bigger, but usually it's like eight weeks and it's good to go. So we are an exception with how extremely long our kind of care period is, which is also why humans don't have as many offspring. But you can see kind of anywhere in this kind of, there's a range. So there's kind of everything from having tons of offspring to having one or two offspring and everything in between. But it all comes back to again, this energy concept. The energy is not unlimited. And so organisms are restrained by the amount of energy they have access to. Which is then where it goes into food webs, because why is energy not unlimited? Because we depend on other organisms for our energy. And they depend on other organisms for their energy. And there's not an infinite number of energy, amount of energy in an ecosystem for everyone to kind of be able to do every, like, there's limits on the kind of the energy available in an ecosystem. Okay, so moving from our kind of more theoretical stuff to some of the stuff that's going to come into some of the calculations. And I will say that they ask about populations a lot. It kind of overlaps in kind of a couple of the different kind of dot points. And it comes up quite a bit in kind of even questions that are related to something else. They might bring in population growth, so definitely something to know about. So the kind of two things is you need to be really clear on the difference between exponential and logistic growth. And then we need to talk about the formulas. Honestly, population math is easy. So it has the formulas on the formula sheet they're given to you. And a lot of it's just kind of common sense. It's algebra, just using your basic ability to manipulate an equation. So it shouldn't be really hard, but I do want to go through it so we're feeling really comfortable with it before kind of going in and doing it on the test. So let's first start by looking at this difference between exponential and logistic. So first thing we're going to do is kind of draw the growth curve. So when we draw growth curves, this is time and this is size. And so even before I go through the curve, I want to answer kind of these next two and then we'll show what that looks like on the curve. So when you think about a growth rate, the growth rate is kind of an indication of how many offspring per individual per year. So that's kind of a way of thinking about it. So if it's exponential, the rate doesn't really increase because that would be like saying, hey, previously I could make two offspring, now I can make four. The idea is just that each individual can make three offspring, let's say. So every year, every individual there is, is going to make three offspring. So that's what we mean by the growth rate. So the growth rate is going to be the same. So the growth rate stays the same, which is basically the number added per existing one. But because you have more existing ones, the growth increases. So the rate, how many each one makes stays the same, but the actual how fast it's growing increases. So it grows faster over time. So the impact of each person is the same, but when you have more people, that's going to be a greater amount of growth. So the rate is the same, but the amount of growth increases over time. And then in exponential, we're assuming that there's no limit that's going to cause it to tap out. So we're basically saying, there's all the resources, all the space, all the food. So there's nothing in place that's going to ever cause it to have to slow down. So as a result, theoretically, it's just going to increase indefinitely. So there's no distinct limitation on that. Just before I give them a draw, I'm kind of skipping around a little bit. But the quick question you come to is like, when is that ever the case? So kind of an easy example is bacteria. So bacteria are so small that they require so little space and so little resources that in our, like if the bacteria gets in your body, it can grow exponentially, usually until your own immune system kills it because of its low demands. So it has low resource demands. So as a result, there's not, it's not going to run out of space or food very quickly. So it's going to be able to essentially become limitless. Another example of that is in the human populations. And kind of if you look at that in more like kind of third world, our first world countries, sorry. The idea being that we have gotten very skilled at kind of plundering resources. So we're like, oh, we will make resources. So the idea that we're eventually going to be limited by resources, we just kind of find more resources. So that's allowed kind of a continued exponential growth. It's not going to be indefinite, like we're starting to see now some of the non-renewable resources that we are taking a toll on. But certainly initially, there's a bit of that. And the other one that's kind of come up is it can happen with invasive species. And that can be because normally kind of increase in predation is an important kind of density dependent factor. A lot of times they don't have a natural predator. So as a result, one of the things that should start to be problematic as they get more increased in more density doesn't really affect them and so therefore they have less kind of limiting factors. Probably not truly exponential, but they can certainly be in kind of initial phases when they're suddenly in an area with new resources available and few things kind of from the top down limiting them. So as a result, when we look at what that looks like in a picture, what we're going to see is that it's just going to basically shoot up. So it's going to start kind of with small and then the increase over time increases such that it took a little while here to go up by that much, but that same amount going up happened in almost no time at all. So very little time is needed for dramatic increases. So we're going to see that kind of J shape, if you will, where it's going to end up almost vertical whereby it's just increasing in so little time that it's just becoming larger and larger and larger. So we talked a little bit about the idea of what limits them. So the idea is there are no density dependent limiting factors. So it's not dependent on their density, which is basically things like resources. So there's nothing that becoming more crowded tends to cause problems with. However, there are still just tendencies for life to happen and environmental changes to affect them. So they're still impacted by density independent factors. So that's going to be things like weathering extremes. So it doesn't matter kind of whether you're a small population or a large population, a dramatic kind of storm can kill off populations. They can also be influenced by human influences, whether that's hunting or deforestation, things like that. So we're just stating that it's not like nothing can ever happen to them. It's just that it doesn't relate to being crowded or to resources. It's just other kind of things that can occur. And then our formula, and so this is where we want to kind of look at our formulas. So it's written on the like sheet with this annoying DN DT, which I actually think makes it look more confusing than it is. So I just want you to think of DN DT as the change in size. So the way we calculate how much did it change in a given year is by finding the max, R max, times the number of individuals. So if we want to say, okay, well, in one year, how much growth did it have? Well, take whatever the growth rate is, which remember your growth rate is just your number added per individual. So take your number added per individual, times the number of individuals, and that's going to tell you the change. Again, these formulas are common sense and in some ways the formulas make them more confusing than they need to be, like using that weird language. So we're just basically stating, if you're trying to determine the change in size, then you're going to take the rate and then you're going to multiply it by the number of individuals. Which while I'm on that, I want to come over here and just make a note about, well, what if it asks you to determine the rate? So it's basically just turning that equation on itself. So if you were trying to determine the rate and you knew the change in size and you knew the initial population size, that's how you would calculate it. So if it asks you to calculate a rate, it's just going to be the number born, the number died. It depends on what it's asking you for, or the number changed. So that depends on whether it's asking you for a birth rate, a death rate, or an overall growth rate because it'll be a little bit different depending on what it's asking for over N, which is the total number of offspring, or the initial number. That's just a recombination of that formula. But I wanted to go over it because to me, it's easier than trying to remember how to plug in an algebraic formula just to say, hey, if it asks you for the birth rate, hey, how many died over how many total you start with? Death rate, how many died over how many did you start with? Change, growth, overall growth rate, how much of a change was there over the initial total? So if you just kind of know that, that's easier to me than trying to remember that you're basically taking this and plugging these two in and solving for R max, which is what you're doing, but that's a little bit more algebraic than just saying whatever the change was, whatever the starting point was, there's your rate. So that's how you would actually find R max if they were to ask you for that. If they gave you R max and just wanted to know the change, then you're going to multiply it by N. And while I'm on that, that will give you the change. Sometimes what it's going to ask you for is what is the new population size? So if it asks you for what is the change in the population, you just directly use that formula. If it asks you for the new population size, you have to use the formula to determine the change, which is just your R max times N. And then you have to add that to your initial population. So I just was going through kind of the problems like this on the test. And again, that should be pretty obvious, but just making sure you do that last kind of step of it is it's easy to work out the change and forget to add it to it. So it'll be like, hey, we made 62 new individuals. Great, but if you started out with 500, you're now 562, not 62. So just make sure to add it to that initial one. So those were kind of the two things I saw in terms of using these formulas is that they expected you to be able to kind of mix and match that around to use it to either calculate the change, the rate, or the new population size. So I wanted to go through kind of all three. Also, while I'm on the formulas, before I move over to logistic, this here, the reason why I wrote this is because sometimes it'll ask you for not the growth rate, but just the birth rate. Or sometimes it'll ask you for just the death rate. There's another kind of equation that's on the formula sheet, which again is like super obvious to me, which is basically just saying that the overall growth rate is the birth rate minus the death rate. So potentially, you could have to use this formula to work out the birth rate. So number born over initial. To work out the death rate, number died over initial, and then use that to work out the growth rate. So that's just another formula that's on there that again is really common sense, but just wanted to mention it because it's on there so they could ask you to do that. Okay, so that's all things exponential. Let's move into logistic now. So with logistic, this time there are some sort of limiting factors. So I want to actually start here and say this time there are density dependent limiting factors. And what that means in density, while I'm kind of skipping all over the place, remember that if it asks you about density, density is just the number of individuals in the area. So the number of individuals divided by whatever units they've given you for the area. So if it's in hectares or acres or whatever, density is just a measure of how many people are in one kind of area. So high density is going to have a higher number in that area kind of unit. Lower density is going to have less. So when we talk about density dependent limitations, we mean as you get more individuals in a crowded area, these are going to become more of a factor. And generally, when we talk about density dependent factors, the main one is resources. So that's going to be food, water, and shelter or space. We tend to think shelter, but a lot, for a lot of organisms, they don't necessarily need a physical sheltering place. They just need enough space to kind of spread out. But some of the other ones that we talked about is once you get more dense, you're also going to have an increase in predation and an increase in disease and kind of a decrease in overall reproductive success. So as the kind of, it kind of linked to here, as there's less resources available, you tend to again, not have the energy available to produce as many offspring. So fewer number of kind of offspring produced. Do note that you are also going to have density independent ones, which is an obvious statement that says, hey, guess what, an earthquake hurts you still as well. So even in a logistic growth, you're also going to see the density independent factors like weathering and human influence have a role as well. But the key is these additional density dependent ones. AP Core seems to love density dependent factors. So they like you to be able to make that connection that as you get in a more crowded, as population sizes increase, these density dependent factors are going to start to play a role. And they like you to know some examples of them. Okay, so if we do have density having a role, let's do our size and time. What that means is as the size goes up, you're going to start running out of resources. And if you start running out of resources, not every individual is going to be able to make their maximum number of offspring. Because some individuals are going to die because they starved or ran out of resources. Some individuals are going to survive but not have the energy to continue producing as many offspring. So what you're going to see is this rate goes down whereby the impact of each individual actually decreases. So the rate starts to slow. So each individual doesn't have as much ability to produce new offspring. That doesn't happen right away, so there'll actually usually be a period of exponential growth. So when there's enough resources and you're relatively small, you're going to see it pretty much the same up until point. And usually there'll be a point around here where now it's kind of like, okay, now it no longer is able to going to maintain that rate. So initially, the rate will be good and then the rate will go down first and therefore the growth will slow down. So here we have kind of maximum growth happening. Then it will continue to go up, but just more slowly. So it will continue to increase. So it might be like, hey, instead of every individual making three new offspring, every individual can make two new offspring. So we're still going up, but not as rapidly. And then eventually it's going to reach a point where if it goes up anymore, there's going to be such limitation that your death rate is actually going to go up and it's going to come back down a bit. And then it's going to stabilize at a point where your birth rate and death rate are about the same. And that point where your birth rate and death rate are about the same and your population stays the same is called your caring capacity. And your caring capacity doesn't mean it can never go above that, but it means it can't stay above that long term. So it may go above the caring capacity, but when it does go above the caring capacity, it increases the death rate and then comes right back down. So kind of the long term point that it evens out. And at your caring capacity, your birth rate should equal your death rate and therefore your growth rate should be nothing. So if your growth rate is birth rate minus death rate, if those two are equal, it means you have no growth. So it just means you're therefore staying the same. Each individual doesn't make any new contribution. For every individual that dies, a new one is born and it kind of evens out. So that's what we're looking at there. Examples are going to be most populations. So this is the norm. In most cases, ecosystems are balanced such that you cannot have any, all the species going crazy exponentially. So there's a degree of competition both within a species and between species that just simply means that most ecosystems are going to kind of reach a climax community, back to your succession terms, of kind of maximum biodiversity. And in order to reach that, no individual species is going to have the resources to indefinitely reproduce. So most established ecosystems are going to show logistic growth. Last thing is the formula, and this will be kind of our last point on the calculation as well. So there is a different formula for how to calculate the change in size if there's a caring capacity. So DN over DT, which again, don't freak out over that weird word. It just means change in size. And this time, you're going to still do your R max, which is just the maximum, or at that time, the rate. So R max is a bit tricky because it does say that the R max will slow. But the problem is going to give you an R max. So it's going to be like, at this point, this is what the rate is. So while here, the R max is consistent, the R max may fluctuate in a caring capacity situation. So it's kind of the R max, like the maximum or the current, whatever it basically gives you. But then we have to take into consideration the caring capacity. So we do K minus N divided by K and then multiply that by N. So it's this little extra piece. So the other one is just R max times N. This one is R max times N with that little factoring in the caring capacity. And K is your caring capacity. So what I will tell you about this is if the problem gives you a caring capacity, use this. Even if you're like, oh yeah, but it's nowhere near the caring capacity. Like it says the caring capacity is like 1500 and there's only 200. I don't really think it's close to it, so I'm going to not use that formula. If it gives you a caring capacity, use that formula. So that's kind of our last tip. So if caring capacity is given, you have to use the formula that takes it into account. Honestly, if it's a really long way away from its caring capacity, that's okay because the caring capacity is going to be so higher above the N. Like if it was, let's say, if this was 2000, this was like 3, then when you do that over N, it's going to basically end up being one and have no impact. So the formula is set up such that if you're far away from the caring capacity, it's not going to change it very much, but you have to use it to get the correct answer. So if caring capacity is given, must use the formula with K. So read the problem. If it doesn't give you a caring capacity, you can't use that formula. So it's pretty nice because if you're in a multiple choice question and it didn't give you a caring capacity, you can try to use that formula all you want, you ain't gotten a K. So you're not going to be able to use it. If it gives you a caring capacity, use it. So it's pretty simple, no caring capacity. So it's pretty simple. No caring capacity given, boom. Caring capacity given, boom. Both are on the formula sheet, so you don't have to memorize them, you just have to know which one to use. Otherwise, the rules are basically the same. So this formula again is going to give you the change in size. And if it asks you for the new population size, you're going to use that formula and then add it to the initial population. So these two formulas are basically doing the same thing, which is just finding the change in size. It's just one of them takes K into account, the other one, there isn't K, so there's no K to take into account. So I think that's everything I need to tell you for those calculations. Um, like I said, I don't think they're hard. It seems like you're basically just using these two formulas. Um, and just know this and this as well. Um, but everything's on your formula sheet. The main thing is just not to get confused by some of the wording. And just understand what each one is actually giving you. So just knowing that this formula tells you the change in population size. Um, that's kind of your main factor that you need to know. Um, so I think that's everything. Uh, you will have a formula sheet, you'll use a calculator. They shouldn't be overly challenging questions, uh, as long as you use the right formula. Okay, so the key with populations, and I meant to write that up, and I didn't, but we'll cover it quickly now. Is that populations are implied all one species. So it's one species in one place at one time. So now we're going to branch out a little bit more and look at it at a community level, which is multiple species. Or multiple populations in one area at one time. So let's kind of make sure to just clarify that real quickly. That when we say population. It's one species only. And when we talk about community. It's going to be many species. And for both, we're meaning in one place at one time. Ecosystem, then the difference with ecosystem is ecosystem expands out a bit and includes abiotic factors. So when you talk about ecosystems, we're starting to look at things like temperature, uh, soil quality, things like that. Um, so those and looking at things like human influence in terms of, uh, carbon dioxide levels. All of that's kind of at an ecosystem level. I would say that the majority of your course is on this kind of population and community level. So even the responses to the environment are really usually at a population level. So how do these organisms kind of respond to their environment? So those are kind of where the real emphasis lies. Uh, so that's what we spent most of our time on. But just understanding the difference between those and the ecosystem is when we start to then say, okay, well. How does the rock formation come into account? So if you think back to ninth grade, we did succession and things like that, that's really in cycles. That's very ecosystem based, but they cut succession and cycles out of your course. So we don't do a lot on the whole ecosystem abiotic factors. Our stuff is pretty centered on that more kind of living organisms, biotic factors. Okay, so when we're looking at multiple species, what we're usually wanting to look at then. Is how do the different species interact with one another? So can populations looking at one species at a time? Now let's look at, okay, well, how are they interacting in that area? So there's different kinds of species to species interactions. Within a community. So these are organisms that are in the same area at the same time. That in some way are interacting with one another. And honestly, this stuff's pretty easy, is why we didn't really spend any time on it in class. But for the review video, I do want to kind of cover everything that's written somewhere in their little dot points. Uh, so we'll kind of cover these. So there's three broad categories of kind of interactions that you would see at a community level. First of all is competition. So different species that are in the same area can compete for the same kind of limited resources. And that relates to what we just talked about, and that's kind of why most populations end up with logistic growth. Is because they're not only trying to get enough resources for themselves. But there's resources for kind of all the different organisms living in that same community. And so that kind of limits how many resources are available for each one. So kind of related to that idea, because they're competing for resources. Two species cannot really live in the exact same place. Feed at the exact same time on the exact same thing. And not kind of ultimately one rule out over the other. Or just dramatically kind of diminish either's ability to survive. So the way we say that is they cannot have the exact same niche. We did a good debate on this if you were here in person, whether it's pronounced niche or niche. Apparently, US tends to call it niche. UK and Australia calls it niche, so sorry for my Australianism coming out there, but I tend to call it niche. Okay, so what we're saying is like, they basically, and your niche is where your kind of role is. So what resources do you need? Um, where are you taking advantage of? How and when are you accessing those? And if two different species are trying to do the exact same thing. Like they both want to live here in this exact space with all the same food, it just won't work. And so that's called the competitive exclusion principle. Which means if they're basically competing. For the exact same thing, it'll be to the detriment of both. So generally, what happens is instead they do something called resource partitioning. Which means two different species, without having like a press conference about it. They just kind of naturally establish slight differences. So they usually are going to kind of come up with a slightly different space. Slightly different resource need. Sometimes it's a matter of time, so sometimes it might be like, you can hunt it this time. I can hunt it this time. You can hunt all of the same food source, but your area is over here, my area is over here. So they kind of negotiate a way to stay out of each other's business. So to some degree, yes, competition is going to happen. But it needs to have some specialization. Because if it's just outright all trying to do the same thing all the time. Usually, one of the species is going to die out. The more dominant one, the one who's more successful, is likely to take over. But if they can develop their own kind of evolved, have a slight difference in kind of how they access it or where they access it. Then they can actually have multiple species survive in the same area. Next one, super obvious as well, is predation. And there's a fun fancy word. If it's a predator who eats plants, it's called herbivory. So technically, predation is animal eating animal, and herbivory is animal eating plant. You can basically use them interchangeably, but they do definitely have different words. And this is actually really important. We did an article, a case study on this idea of a trophic cascade. But predation plays a really key role in maintaining an ecosystem. Which actually, I said that, and I just remembered I didn't finish talking about ecosystems on the energy part. So if you're wondering about that, I now remember, and we will come back to that in just a second. Um, so, uh, let, I dragged off track. But basically, what needs to happen is if you didn't have predators, you would actually have so many primary consumers. They would wipe out all your plant material and your ecosystem would collapse. So predators are part of the balance. So having predators is actually important for ecological stability. And it kind of comes back to even what we're going to talk about in the minnow invasive species, which you've already read about. Whereby if you don't have a predator, then one organism over reproduces, overfeeds. And actually is detrimental to the overall kind of balance and diversity of the community. So you want to have kind of predators to keep every kind of level in case. And that's actually called a trophic cascade, which is basically that top-down model. Which says. That the trophic level above it plays a role in maintaining the trophic levels below it and keeping everything in balance. The third type of relationship then is symbiosis. And thankfully, symbiosis is still in the course. And the questions on it are super easy, so it's awesome when it comes up. So now we're looking at kind of the ongoing relationship between two species. And competition in theory is a negative negative. So neither one benefits from competition. Predation is not ongoing, because you can't have an ongoing relationship with something you ate. That's the end of your relationship. This is an ongoing relationship where at least one is beneficial. And so the three categories, and hopefully you remember this from ninth grade or from your reading, because we didn't really spend any time on it. Ideally, you have mutualism or mutualistic relationships. And in that case, both benefit. So that's your smiley smiley, it's beneficial to both. Commensalism is when one benefits and it has no impact on the other. So one species does something that proves helpful to one. But doesn't actually benefit or harm, uh, them. So they don't have any, a lot of times they don't know about it. So a hermit crab, you know, lives inside the shell that the snail left behind. Snail doesn't even know it's living there. And then parasitism. Is when there's a benefit to one, but a cost to the other. But again, we're not talking predator relationship and they don't get eaten. It's a long-term ongoing harm. So they're living, using them in some way for their kind of resource or habitat, which comes at a cost to them. Though, like I said, we didn't really spend any time on them because they're really easy. But there are, they do come up in questions, so make sure you do know the difference in those three. And always remember, the really important thing is just questioning what impact does it have on the other? So is it helping them? Like, can you identify a clear benefit? If so, it's mutualism. If there's not a clear, obvious benefit from the relationship, not just like, hey, they're happy in life. But like, from the relationship with the other one, are they getting something out of it? If not, then it's going to be commensalism. So in addition to talking about the actual relationships between individual species. So when we talk about, you know, uh, symbiotic relationships or competition. We're really meaning zooming in on a couple of species within the community. Uh, but we also want to look more broadly, just kind of at the community is zoomed out a little bit. And look at kind of all the different species that make it up. So when we do that, we're talking about biodiversity. So we're looking at how diverse are the different number of species within a community. So biodiversity is really looking at a community level, because a population is not biodiverse, because they're all the same species. And we're talking about biodiversity, we're looking at the living things. So it wouldn't really necessarily apply at the bigger ecosystem level. So it's very much a community measure. And it's basically an indication of two things. So it's an indication of the number of different species. So more different species is going to increase the biodiversity. So if you only have a couple of species, that's not very diverse. But it's important that the species you have all be relatively abundant. So it doesn't do any good to have 10 different species if really only two are making up 95% of your population. You just have a scattering of the others. So it's the number of different species and the abundance of each. So we want to make sure that we have lots of species that are all in kind of relatively matched. Or at least sufficient abundance to be considered to be making a part of the community. So before we get into kind of the calculation parts of that, let's just make sure we understand kind of the importance of it. So biodiversity is very helpful. So if a community has an increase in biodiversity, it's going to increase the stability of the community. Because if you have very few organisms, then anything that happens to single organisms. Is going to run the risk of kind of collapsing your whole feeding relationships. So because of food webs are so interdependent. If you don't have very many primary consumers. And something happens, a disease that affects that primary consumer comes along. You can lose kind of a whole trophic level, which is going to send kind of your entire community into disarray. So the more diversity you have, the more the entire community is stable. Because the entire community kind of has some backup built in. So let's just clarify that an increase in biodiversity. Is linked to an increase in community stability. And when we talk about community stability, this is where we're kind of coming into the disruptions. Because I'm not actually going to do any kind of distinctive kind of, uh, summary of disruptions. Because generally, the disruption questions are like common sense problem solving. Um, so we're just going to talk a little bit about invasive species. And that's about the extent of the ones you really need to know by name. Uh, but basically, a disruption is something that generally impacts kind of one species. So what are some, so when we say increased stability, that means it's going to be less affected by disruptions. So whatever your disruptions are to a community. They're going to be less impactful if you have a high level of biodiversity. So when we talk about disruptions, they can just be weather related. And even then, a lot of times, weather will, some species will be a little bit more resistant to it. So if you have a greater diversity, when you do have kind of weather extremes. You're more likely to have species that can withstand that and kind of keep the community going. The other kind of big disruption is invasive species, and we're going to talk about those in a minute. But essentially, if you have a community with high biodiversity. An invasive species is less likely to wreak havoc. Because you're more likely to have more organisms that may act as a predator. You're also more likely to have competition with the invasive species to prevent it from taking over. If you have a lot of other organisms at that trophic level. So the more kind of diverse your community is, when you put an invasive species in it. It's not going to have that chance to kind of take over if you have a balanced, full ecosystem. And then the other big category, and this is where a lot of the disruption stuff comes in, is human influences. Now obviously, there are exceptions to that. So if humans completely deforest a rainforest, it doesn't really matter how diverse it was in the first place. We tear the entire thing down, it's going to cause harm to the entire community. But in general, things can happen where humans can hunt, like a single species. Well, if that single species is the only secondary consumer. Then we're looking at a situation where that can kind of collapse your ecological food web. Uh, and then one of the examples we looked at was like coyote removal. So the idea is if humans are like, we don't like this animal because it's harmful to us. So zoink, and we take it out. Well, if we don't have a very diverse community, removal of a single species can have a very domino effect. And kind of cause a lot of harm. So catastrophic human influence, like global warming and deforestation. Community biodiversity isn't going to necessarily, uh, make any sort of immunity to. But it's more those small-scale things where humans do something that impacts one or two species. Uh, then it can have that kind of impact. Okay, so how do we actually measure then the biodiversity? So that's what biodiversity is. How do we actually measure it? Um, is it going to be by two kind of things that we calculate? So we're going to measure it as a combination of two things. I want you to know these two words, and then we're going to look at what the actual formula is. So it relates to what we said here. So it's measured by the species richness. And the species richness is just the number of different ones. And then it's also measured by the species abundance. Which is the number of each. And so we put that together in a formula. So the formula is on the formula sheet, so as usual, you don't have to memorize the formula. But you do be able to have to use the formula. And this one is a little bit, just the math behind it, usually you make sure you kind of know how you would do it. So if we look at our formula, the formula is called Simpson's. Diversity Index. And that's how it'll be labeled on your formula sheet. And it's going to go 1 minus, and then the sum of for each organism. You're going to do N over N and then square it. So you're going to do this for each species. Then you're going to add them together. Then minus 1. So it's kind of a bit of a, first step is to actually do this for each individual species. And you may want to do it as a chart or just kind of a list. I think we did in class, we just kind of list your five species, calculate, calculate, calculate. Then 2, add those together, and then 3, don't forget to subtract that from 1. So N is the number of each. So number for that species. So that might be 500 daffodils. And then big N is the total number, all species. So by doing the formula this way, both of these two things matter. Because the more different species you have, the more kind of things you're going to calculate that's going to make, um, an impact. And then the number of each is also going to determine that number. And then you have to subtract it from the 1. And then the higher the number, which is the total. The higher the biodiversity. So I'm not going to work out a whole problem, because you can go back to the lesson video and kind of see an example problem. So I didn't do any problems with the population stuff either, just for trying to keep this video not super long. Um, but basically, like if you had four different species of flowers, daffodils, tulips, daisies. I don't know, apparently, I don't even, petunias. Okay, and then it tells you how many of each. You'll have to do, okay, number of daffodils over the total, square it. Number of daisies over the total, square it. Number of tulips over the total, square it. Number of petunias over the total, square it. Add all of those numbers together, subtract from 1. So that's how you use that formula, not overly challenging formula. So just something to know about, um, and make sure you can use it. The last thing I want to do on this species. The last thing I want to do on this species stuff is just look at the three different types of species that come up. And they're kind of related again here to this idea of disruptions, and also just kind of related to their role in the ecosystem. So there's three types of species that have particularly important roles in a community. So the first one is what's called a foundation species. And a foundation species essentially does something to the ecosystem, to the abiotic usually atmosphere, to prepare it for other living species. So a foundation species basically alters the habitat in such a way that helps multiple other species. So we're just going to say prepares habitat for many. So beavers that build a dam is an example of that, because then that becomes a home for lots of others. So anything that kind of creates something that's used by many other species, coral are a great example of that, because lots of species then make their home in the coral. So the coral is that foundation species that's providing kind of something essential to a lot of other organisms. So they become really important. You can also even talk about moss and lichen being foundation species, because they can break down rock in the early stages of succession. So that's a species that plays a role in terms of habitat preparation, making it really important for the other kind of species in the community. The next one that's really important, doesn't necessarily play a habitat role, but just kind of plays an important balancing role in a food web, and that's called a keystone species. So a keystone species is one that's not necessarily super prevalent, but it's crucial to keeping a balance. So it may be a top predator, that although there's not that many of them, they're really important for keeping the number of the next trophic level contained, so that it doesn't overfeed. So it's a, by definition, it's just basically a disproportionately important species, given its number. And so again, if we're saying for its size, a lot of times, we are referring more to those kind of top apex kind of predator relationships. Obviously, plants are going to be important, but they're also extremely abundant. So their size kind of represents their importance. But a lot of times, this is one that although there may not be very many, by fulfilling that predator role at the top, they are keeping everything else balanced. So it kind of comes back to that trophic cascade model that says every level plays a role, including those top levels, by keeping things from overfeeding. So that's a keystone species that has a really big impact on its community. And then the last one is the one that's not supposed to be there, and that's the invasive species. So invasive species is a species that is introduced in a non-native habitat. And generally, those are really negative for the community. And the reason is, is because generally, the invasive species then outcompetes a lot of native species. So it can outcompete and destroy native species. Usually because they're all competing for resources, but a lot of times, the invasive species doesn't have a predator. So then it develops this advantage over the native species that have natural predators, and then they die out, and it kind of takes over that trophic level. And that causes a lot of kind of trickling down effects as well that are a problem. So again, these two both kind of come back to that idea that predation actually plays a really important role, and we actually rely on predators to keep things in balance. And removing a predator or introducing something that doesn't have a predator kind of impacts the whole community. Which all reminds me that we need to go back to food webs, because I accidentally skipped that and all my enthusiasm over metabolism. So let's look now at just quickly recapping food webs, because that's where kind of all this is coming back to in a community. And food webs, they're kind of at an ecosystem level, but really, they're just a summary of predation and competition within a community. So they're kind of a visual that looks at the biotic kind of dependency within a community. Okay, so there's nothing hugely earth-shattering about food webs, and they're probably stuff you remember from freshman year or even from middle school. But I do want to make sure that we do cover that, because there is a lot of, given the disruption questions, that do rely on a fundamental understanding of food webs. So first of all, all energy in an ecosystem begins as solar energy. And that solar energy is only transferred into glucose, which is our chemical energy via the process of photosynthesis by our producers. So our first trophic level is going to be whoever is responsible for taking that solar energy and converting it into a usable form of glucose. And so those are our producers, and so they make up the trophic level 1. While we're talking about producers, let's just quickly touch on one thing. So first of all, another word for producer is autotroph. And you'll see right here, I wrote photosynthesis. So I do want to clarify that there are two different types of autotrophs. So most of the diagrams that we look at, most of the time, we're looking at photoautotrophs. So photoautotrophs are going to use the sun, and they're going to use photosynthesis. So it's going to be solar power, and it's going to be done via the process of photosynthesis. However, there is another group that are really important, particularly in kind of, they can seem really important in kind of aquatic ecosystems, kind of at the bottom of oceans, and just kind of certain kind of more extreme environments. They play a really big role, and that's chemoautotrophs. And chemoautotrophs are actually able to convert like other chemicals. So they don't need sun, they can actually create glucose using kind of compounds from other chemicals that are available. Almost always bacteria, so they're usually bacteria that do this. And they're able to convert chemicals into energy without needing solar power. So that's kind of a special subset of that. So most kind of what we think of it as basic land ecosystems, communities are relying on producers in the form of plants or algae. So when we say plants, it can also, algae does 25% of the world's photosynthesis, and algae is a protist. So most of the time, we're talking plants and protists that use the process of photosynthesis, or bacteria that also can photosynthesize with the sun. But there is kind of a possibility as well that you can create kind of energy just from chemical compounds if you have chemoautotrophs in your ecosystem. So whatever the producers make, what's really important, and this is where it comes down to that imperfection of metabolism, is that a lot of what they make, they're going to actually use or gets lost in the imperfection of the process. So 90% of that glucose, they either use themselves, or they lose it as heat. So plants are not altruistic. So they are not photosynthesizing, because they care deeply about our need for glucose. They're photosynthesizing because they need glucose. So they're making it for themselves. So most of the glucose they're making is to meet their own needs. And in the process of making glucose through photosynthesis, which is a metabolic process, some of the ATP is just lost as heat. So we're losing some in the process. So most plants will photosynthesize enough to meet all of their needs, and then have about 10% left over as growth. So 10% is going to be growth, which is going to be transformed into tissue. So that's going to become new tissue. So 90% of the glucose is just to maintain what they have, is going to get used up, and then 10% is going to become the new tissue. That 10% is the only thing that's going to be available to the next trophic level. Because when we actually get energy from plants, we do it by eating their tissue. So if they put it into tissue, then yes, that's available for us. So then we call animals that eat plants, primary consumers. You can also refer to them as herbivores if all they eat is that. Generally, primary consumers referring more to their role in that food chain or food web, whereas herbivore, omnivore, carnivore refers to their overall dietary preferences. So we generally use the primary, secondary, tertiary, and so forth. So then the primary consumer eats the producers, and they get that 10% of available energy. So they are now the second feeding level, so they are now trophic level 2. So just be careful if you have any questions on the food webs to check, is it asking you what consumer level? In which case, it might be meaning primary, secondary, tertiary, or is it asking what trophic level? Because these are trophic level 2, consumer level 1, so primary consumers. So same idea, and again, because consumers, particularly if we're talking mammals, so if we're looking at a primary consumer of a rabbit, or a mouse, or a deer, they're going to have high metabolic rates. So they're going to be using up a lot of energy just to be able to warm themselves and so forth. So they're going to need to eat a lot. And again, 90% of what they eat is going to be either used or lost as heat. And when you're looking at endotherms, losing as heat is actually kind of using it, because you're using that heat loss to warm the body. So it's either being used as warmth or being used for movement and reproduction and digestion and all of the circulation, all the different things that we do that require energy. So they eat, and the majority of it, they're needing just to stay alive. So same with you, when you eat dinner every night, the majority of what you eat, you're using just to keep going. You're not converting it all into muscle or fat. You're not like every day, just getting bigger and bigger. The majority of it is just kind of sustaining yourself. However, in growing organisms, so it's a little bit different once they're adult and full size, but 10% is going to grow into new tissue. And that 10% of new tissue is what's going to be available to my next trophic level, which is the secondary consumers. So now my secondary consumers are going to eat the primary consumers and so forth. So then the same thing is going to happen. But again, as we get higher up the food web, we're more likely to get these kind of larger endotherm animals that again, have these really high metabolic rates that need a lot of calories, because they're both warming their bodies and doing kind of their cellular functions. So all of this means that to have an established ecosystem, you need to have a lot of producers. So these need to be the most abundant, because you need to have enough energy to feed the entire ecosystem. So that's one argument, is that basically, the success of an ecosystem depends on having enough producers. And that's called the primary productivity model, which is basically a bottom-up argument, which basically says that the number of producers determines kind of the rest of the trophic level. So having enough producers to feed enough primary consumers, to feed enough secondary consumers, to feed enough tertiary consumers is crucial. So you have to have that primary productivity, has to be most abundant in order to make sure that your entire food web is getting the food that you need, because again, we're losing so much in each process. Just in terms of, terms, make sure you then also know, if we kept going, it would be tertiary, quaternary. And I've never seen them ask on quintenary. But if they did, that's kind of the highest of the levels they would be likely to ask you about. So it just keeps going. Remember, because we already mentioned this, the trophic cascade, that even though the number of producers determine the level, the top consumers also are important, because they limit the size of each one and keep a balance. So the number of these also determine the size of a community. Because if you have enough second, the right number of secondary consumers, it keeps your primary consumers from overgrazing on your producers. So you need to have the balance. If you just had no top ones, you would just, you'd run out of your plants and everybody would die out. So those also play a role as well, and that's what we call the trophic cascade. And in reality, they can, you can look at examples where one seems to have a bigger impact than the other, but there's really a balance between both of them. So it's important that you have the correct number of producers, plenty of producers, but that you also have the top consumers. And so a balanced community is going to have the right number of each. So enough producers to make the food to live throughout, but enough predators at each level to prevent any one level from overhunting or overgrazing to the point that it would collapse everything. And so because everybody's important, disrupting any one level is going to impact the other levels. So disruption to any trophic level will have a consequence to the others. So if you disrupt your bottom trophic levels, you're looking at loss of that primary productivity. So if you don't have enough plants, you're not going to be able to feed everybody. But if you disrupt your top trophic levels, you're looking at that top-down kind of approach, that cascading effect, whereby then you're going to have the overgrazing of the middle levels, which is going to ultimately mean not enough plants, and then you run into the same situation. So it's really all about balance, just needing to make sure that you have enough of everything. This should be an easy thing, but just for the sake of completion, let's just clarify that we said here that producer is the same thing as autotroph, and that consumer, we also call heterotrophs. So just vocab-wise, making sure you can kind of go back and forth between those terms. That's really all you need to know for food webs. You just need to be comfortable with the terms, primary, secondary, consumer, making sure, and then making sure you understand this concept, that the balance is important everywhere, and that every level has an impact on the success of the other levels. So they're kind of very interdependent on one another. And you do need to know that 90-10 rule. So that idea that only 10% of any of the energy obtained or made is actually going to go towards body growth and therefore be available to someone who eats you. The rest of it got burned up, released out, and is no longer available. Last thing, and kind of we'll do it here, because it kind of relates to producers. So I did say I like to cover anything that's done in our labs, because those are fair game. So the last lab that we did, and we just did this, so we're not going to spend a long time on it, but I like to try and make these videos as whole as possible, where I feel like I've covered content-wise, anything that could show up. So that's looking at the idea of transpiration. And so transpiration is water loss at the producer level. So transpiration, remember, is loss of water through the stomatas, which are on the leaves of producers. And transpiration is important at a whole kind of community level, because of what we just said. So we have to have successful producers. If we don't have successful producers, it's going to undermine kind of the success of my entire ecosystem. So that's really important. And so the other thing is what we looked at is basically, if we come back to kind of response to the environment, that the environment and particular abiotic factors can have a really big impact on that. So if we look at our lab, what we found is kind of the presence of sun, heat, dryness. Those are all things that are going to increase that rate of transpiration and cause transpiration to increase, which is going to cause more water loss at a producer level. If producers lose water, they're going to be able to photosynthesize less, which is going to impact the kind of energy availability of my whole ecosystem. So kind of impacts the entire community if we have high rates of transpiration. So plants have developed some adaptations to kind of limit transpiration. So some of the adaptations that plants have evolved to limit transpiration is that they have the ability to close their stomata during the heat of the day. So they use guard cells. And that's kind of a behavioral adaptation, if you will. So that comes back to kind of response to the environment. It's also related to a hormone, to abyscous acid. So it's a behavioral kind of response that says, if it's really hot and dry, I have the ability to close my stomata to prevent transpiration. So we're kind of going full circle here. That's a response to the environment that's intended to kind of prevent overexcessive water loss. Another thing is more of a physiological thing, is the placement. So they can have stomata only on the underside. And that's going to be a physiological adaptation, which is something physically in place that prevents kind of the loss. Honestly, I don't really know that they, I, with the way the course is written now, I'd be surprised if they asked a super-specific question about adaptations for transpiration, because it seems like it's kind of something content-wise they phased out, but they did keep the lab in there. So just in case they decide to go for it, because it's in there with the lab, just being aware that there are both kind of behavioral adaptations and physiological adaptations in place to try and manage the reduction of transpiration. to try and manage the reduction of transpiration so that there's enough water in, going into the producers so that they can continue to photosynthesize and create the energy that the entire ecosystem is relying on. So that's hopefully everything that will get you through this test. It's a lot of, it's just kind of common sense and being able to interpret data lots, and lots of research diagrams, data tables. So make sure you just take your time, think about the questions, and feel comfortable with each one, and kind of put your best kind of problem-solving data analysis skills to work. And then know the content that we cover in this video, and you should be good.